Rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning that the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment. But the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and are available for everyone to review. Thank you.
So, members in attendance tonight, we have Mike Beecher, Bob Jones, Jessica Van Wirt, Brian Crossman, and Rich Hewlett, and I'm Kristin Powers. And everybody else who's here, I've gotten down. And online, we have Harry Van Meter and Julie Mack. An addition this evening is an executive session to discuss labor relations agreements with employees following, we've got ongoing applicants coming in for the highway department, so pertaining to that. And the minutes that need approval are from our last regular meeting of July 23rd.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Right.
Pre-requested?
Pre-requested, we have Chris Pritchard tonight.
Thanks for giving me a few minutes. Chris Pritchard, basically what I'm trying to do is reach out to all the select boards and private departments and some other, you know, local folks in the five towns. Just introduce myself. Let you know a little bit about me and some of my background. I decided to run for state representative, so what I really wanted to do was just let the boards and stuff know a little bit about me. So, I was born in Vermont. I grew up in South Poltony, next to the DeBonnis Farm on Route 31. Was educated through the Poltony School System, elementary, high school. Went into the workforce right after high school. During my high school years, I had part-time jobs like every kid did back then, and worked a little bit at Green Mountain College. And that's where I met my future wife. She was a student at the time. I had graduated. We were married in 1985 and started our new life. She, out of school, she went to, she was hired as a school, primary school teacher at the Wells Village School, and she taught there for about 15 years. And when Meadowey School opened, she went on board there and she retired in 2021. I thought I wanted, I got, I was working at Green Mountain College because I thought I wanted to be a chef, but that didn't work out, so I ended up in the car business, on the service side. And, you know, started working for Phil Alderman out of high school, washing cars, and worked my way through it. And eventually, I had an opportunity with Jim John Hand in Manchester at their Chevrolet Volkswagen dealer, and I worked for them for 27 years. They retired. I couldn't. So, I spent the last six years of my career working for what's now Oliver Subaru in Rutland. There was a service manager there. So, Jean and I bought our first house, became part of the Rupert community, lived in Rupert for about 15 years. I had a neighbor, George Gordy, who was on the select board there. He was a farmer in town. We used to walk by the house frequently and stop and we'd chat. And he encouraged me one day to get involved in town stuff, so he notified me there was an opening on the planning commission, so I threw my name in the hat. The select board appointed me. A few talks later, I ended up on the select board for several terms and served in that One of my terms, if some people remember, the Nemrick system was just coming onboard and which caused panic, I think, throughout the state. Donnie Lewis was the treasurer slash town clerk at the time and wasn't real big on computers, so I was asked by the board to help him with the Nemrick system and kind of get him acclimated. It was a struggle to get him to give up his abacus, but he finally did. And then later, I was appointed to the Bennington Regional Planning Commission. I served with Charlie Rockwell, representing Rupert for a while on that. We ended up moving back to Poltony where I grew up and lived there until about 2018 when we moved to Polat. We live on North Polat Road, Jean and I, by Scotty Cleveland's farm, so. That's pretty much my history. You know, we're both retired now. I do, you know, I do some stuff, some volunteer stuff. I've been a hunter ed instructor for about 31 years for the state, certified teaching hunter safety courses and people how to responsibly own and handle firearms. Also a bow instructor, and I've been involved heavily with the local 4H shooting sports program in Polat. I've been with that for about 18 years. Shotgun instructor there, teaching the kids that discipline. And I also am a trustee on the Poltony Cemetery Commission, so I help out with that. And I'm just trying to get out, meet people, have a dialogue with them and have conversation. It's way out of my comfort zone. You know, I bumped into Rob in a couple times, and we've had good chats, and, you know, he says it's, you know, it's a tough thing because it's self-promotion. And I guess for some people, it's easier than it is for others, so. But I'm enjoying it. People have been respectful to me, and I hope the people that support me treat Rob in the same way. It should really be about ideas and sure and that, but the people make the decision and, you know, what they think's best for themselves. That's, that's all I wanted to say, and I appreciate you allowing me the time to say it.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Does anybody have any questions, anything I could ask Chris? Well, we appreciate the information and it's good to hear you getting out and getting your name out there. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, does Julie have her handout?
Oh, Julie does.
I don't really have a question, but I do think that Chris deserves some appreciation because I understand how hard it is to promote yourself when you're at this, like, local, unappreciated level. And I know it's hard to try to serve at this level, and I just think that we should thank him for taking the time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
I'm going to enjoy the rest of the meeting if I can.
Any announcements?
Nothing from me, no.
Zoning administrator?
Nothing to report.
Nothing tonight, Nancy, thank you. Planning commission?
That we reported last time.
Okay. The warning went out.
Um, yeah, that, so the, the stuff about the bylaw repeal and bylaw amendments is with the select board now, and Deb sent out the warning for the, September 3rd is going to be our public hearing. And she also sent it out to be published in the Rutland Herald. So they should publish it, no problem with 15 days to spare.
Okay. Vote for him.
So, Damon is here, but I have his report for him. So, the highway department has been checking roads after the storms, doing some mowing in West Polat, built sideboards for the new truck, has been hauling Winterstone, installed a new sign on Check Clark Road, has been performing ditching on the Rupert Mount, uh, Polat Hill Road with the new speed limit sign. Cutting brush, backhoe maintenance, mowing in West, continued mowing in West Polat this past week, has been doing some office organization and meeting with applicants, continuing brush cutting, changing oil and rotating tires, continuing to check roads and continuing with ditching. And upcoming projects are more of the same.
Anybody have any questions for Damon? Thank you.
Question. Is there anything besides actually witnessing the bridge being reconstructed, is there any target date offered by the contractor?
So, I reached out to them a couple of times the last couple of days, and they haven't gotten back to me for an update, but I did try to get an update for this meeting. As soon as we do, I expect to have one before the week is out, and I don't know how we can get the information out, but.
Send it to Deb, maybe?
Yeah, we can send it out.
Yeah.
It looks like all the rebar or everything they have on site is just about installed, so I don't know if that, what that means relative to coming to be pulled.
As soon as we get an update, we'll post it.
Anything from the assessors? Nothing from the assessors. Town clerk's memo.
Oh, yep, I'm here.
Hi, Deb.
I have the memo in front of all you guys and everybody, whatever. I just wanted to remind everyone, I think Jessica just kind of hit on this a little bit, but everything that comes into my office, I do email to everyone on the board, just so that you know what is going on within our local government and committees and hearings and agendas. So, you probably get a lot from me, and, you know, it might be easy just not to pick up on everything, but I did want to remind you that everything that comes into my office goes to you as well. I did speak with Frank today. He is going to remove all of the display, Merck display stuff so that we can start prepping for primary election next week. So, he, I think, has agreed to come in tomorrow and remove his display and take it upstairs to the auditorium. I'm still waiting for the installation of the quad box. Matt Corey is, has assured me that he's going to come in before September to get that installed so that we're ready for the PEG TV installation. There are three liquor and lottery applications for you to approve tonight. All three are for the same establishment, but for different aspects of serving liquor on premises. There's just one A&R notification, just for your information. And I kind of wanted to get a poll from you. We do need to have a Board of Civil Authority and a Board of Abatement meeting, both of which would take probably 15 to 20 minutes at most. And I was wanting to know if you would be interested in doing a half hour before a select board meeting, if that's a possibility? If not, I would have, I would schedule it on an off night from a select board meeting.
Would like to do it the night.
So I'm kind of hoping to hear from you on that.
I would like to do it the night of our next meeting, if we can.
What about the rest?
I can do it.
6:30, we can make 6:30 work. Okay.
Did you hear that, Deb?
The next meeting, I, I was kind of thinking, 8/27 or 9/10? Is it 8/27? That's not your next meeting, is it?
The 20th is the next meeting.
Oh, the 20th is the next meeting?
I think so.
Yeah, today's the 6th. The 20th will be the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so do you want to do it on the 20th?
That works for us. I hear no objections, so if that works for you, we might as well go for it.
Okay, yeah, no, it's, we just have one in-house abatement request and something that we need to do for the general election coming up in November. So anyway, okay, so I'll get, on the 20th, that's two weeks. Okay, I'll get the notice out to both the Board of Civil Authority and the Board of Abatement, and we'll get that up and running. Thanks a lot for being flexible.
And I'll get with you on Zoom. Deb, I can get that set up.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone, unless anybody has any questions for me.
I guess we're all set. Thanks for joining us tonight, Deb.
Okay, and make sure you make a motion on those three liquor licenses.
Okay.
Applications.
I guess then that I will move that we approve these three Department of Liquor and Lottery applications. There's application 47009 for third-class restaurant bar license, application 47018 for outside consumption permit, and application 47019 for first-class restaurant bar license. And these are all for JD Bean LLC, which is the bar and restaurant in tavern. You have all that info?
Yes.
In the thing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie.
Hi. Two warrants this week. Payroll is $7,282.28. Accounts payroll is $125,755.51, and then includes the guardrail, which that invoices is in your packet if you would like to review it. The general fund monies is $14,189.63. Highway, $111,565.84. We did send like 40 of our book for this, so that's not accounted for in this, but that's, that will be later. Waste water, $7,282.32. In July, because of flooding that has happened elsewhere in the state, the state determined that they wanted to send out extra highway state aid. So, we have to date received three quarters of state aid totaling $80,467.01. We received the land use change in property, in homestead property tax payments that go to the municipalities for $26,366, and we have received $6,075 towards the bylaw modernization grant. And then I've been fairly busy, just tax payments, tax bills have gone out, so payments are already coming in, basically.
Julie, I have a question about that, the highway state aid. Is that, that we got quarter three early, or are they just giving us extra total?
They've paid three quarters total to date, and they should really probably at this point have paid one.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
I'll move on payroll warrant 25008 and accounts payable warrant 25009.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Any more questions for Julie? Thanks for joining us tonight, Julie.
Sure, just while I have you, one other thing, two other things. I have set up a time to meet with the auditor, so that's going to be happening in September. I wanted to let you know about that. And also, for later, I do not have a school board report because we are not meeting this month, so we won't be meeting again until September.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything from emergency management? No. Anything from the health officer?
Yes, so Jennifer reported that since the last update, there has been a report of one cat bite in West Polat, and following the receipt of a fax relating that, relating to that, there is some necessary follow-up.
Okay. For Jennifer, her diploma, three years of being a health officer, so send her a message and say that's available if she wants it. Certificate.
Thank you.
Waste water treatment, the extra money was because they repaired a manhole a few weeks ago. The top was all broken out about a manhole. Think somewhere like where Egg Street comes out, no, I don't know. Ticking out, what the hell is ticking out? Uplid. Uplid. Somewhere near the top of the hill there or something, it was all, all breaking up, so. And, anything for facilities?
Hearing that there's a leak in the library basement and I met with Leon Corey, and he's got an agenda scheduled to investigate. I mean, the warning light is on for the second.
What about the leak in the basement?
I believe the librarian assistant called the plumber.
As announced as far as facilities? Okay. Older unfinished business.
Okay, so I think the first thing on there was the gravel pit. So I did hear, I think that there's been no progress made, which I can be corrected, but I think there's been no progress made with getting anywhere with figuring out if any of the abutting landowners might like to sell us property. I know that there have been the start of some conversations, but there's been nothing concrete on that. But Cody Hicks did reach out to me, which I'm just going to pull up this email from him. Just a second. So, so he's held off on printing the recordable Mylar in the event that the town was going to be granted an easement for a wider access road. The easement could be shown on the survey and used as a reference for the easement deed if the adjoining property owner was agreeable. If the town isn't interested in the easement idea, I'm happy to print the survey as I have it now and deliver it for recording. Julie has sent payment in full, and I'm fine with waiting for the town's decision, but I wanted to check in on the status of this. So, I let him know that I'd be back in touch. Seems like he's just kind of waiting if we want it to be finite or if we want to hold off.
Seems like since us, we're still trying to work through this progress, we might as well wait and get it. It's not, it's not, a Mylar map isn't going to change anything, so.
Right, okay, so I'll let him know that if he could just hold off on that, but he has been paid, which is good, so it's not.
Right, it's not, we're not holding him up because we're waiting for that one piece, so.
Right.
No, it seems to me like it makes sense to.
Someone's in the waiting room again, Kristin. So, that was the gravel pit, and then the second item, which was the open meeting law. So I did put an email out to Sean Ruck, and he has some ideas. First off, he wants to just, about storing the meeting information and everything like that, so he does, he wants to just kind of dive a little bit deeper into the website and make sure that it has the storage that we're going to need. He also had an idea of creating sort of a general and shared email account for all of the boards so that following a meeting, that email account could be used to upload the meeting recordings in a more easily and organized fashion, so those are some ideas, so we'll keep working on that. I think we're gonna, him and I and maybe Jessica will chat at some point and we'll continue those conversations, but nothing groundbreaking, but we're continuing to move ahead with that conversation.
Sounds like we have those two items pretty well in progress. Anything else under old or unfinished business? New business?
I do have one other thing. In regards to the tires for the grader, did you ever bring the quotes in?
You can go get it.
That's okay, I just, I want us to be able to decide on it so we can get tires for you before you need it.
Yeah, you want, I can run up and grab the paper. I meant to grab it when I left today and I forgot.
Yeah, I think that would be good if, if you do have, we'll be a few minutes before we.
Yeah, plus we got to go into.
Right.
Anyways, so.
Yeah, I can run up and, I meant to and then I forgot. I'll go grab it, I'll be here.
Thanks, Damon.
So, new business? Any new business? No. What about public comment? Frank?
This is forward-thinking relative to the tightness of, you know, people putting the proven school boards and taxes supposedly going up. And I went to Vermont, Green Mountain Care, for the speed and government hospital, and everybody was there who moved, pretty much. And they had a guy deliver a presentation, and the summary of this is that they have a problem with Medicaid isn't reimbursing for acute care costs at the actual cost of the hospitals around the state, all of them. And nine hospitals, the smaller ones, their state is just putting in millions each year to try and keep them afloat. But what's happened is that there's been a trend, and I was watching the insurance numbers for years, and I brought that up in a comment. And I hadn't seen numbers looking good, but I found out the reason why is because Medicaid simply isn't able, the more volume you have claims under Medicaid, the more red ink they develop, period. And so what they're saying, and so Blue Cross wanted a certain increase in the mid-teens last year, they didn't get it, they got lower, because the care board controls all the hospital costs and all the premiums for insurance companies. They control the whole kit and caboodle, all right? So they didn't give them the increase. So, Blue Cross is going into a year dealing with a potential red on their, on their budget, because they forecast ahead what they're going to do when they get the premium, they don't know what the costs are going to be, but they were also higher. So what's happened is, in the program, we were shown that Blue Cross, for example, for example, wants a 24% increase in rates, okay? On top of what they got last year, so you're talking about 30 to 35% increase in two years on the health insurance side. I already know a small business owner that's canceled the group insurance for the, all the employees. But the, that's going to be interesting to see how that comes in, out in the wash, because what I asked was, they were given all this, they were hoping that someone like Elon Musk would show up with money, Santa Claus with a whole bunch of money. This might be to try and push it, get the state to do it, but the state has these education costs and all these costs and inflation and all this stuff going on already. So, it was like, how are we going to get the money? The people aren't getting any better, Medicaid isn't paying anymore, so, so it didn't sound too good, because what, in the, in the, so I asked him, I said, I raised my hand, I went through these insurance numbers, I says, I've been seeing the trends, and I says, now this is all Plan A, pointing at these three big screens and a room full of people, this is all Plan A. I says, what do you have for Plan B? They don't have a Plan B. They, they don't have a Plan B. And I, and he says, what we, what will happen is here in Plan A, it's in this line where we just go out and we close nine regional hospitals. Boom.
Well, thank you for bringing this up to our attention and we can watch it.
But the health insurance premiums are going to go up, and where people are paying sewer fees, blah, 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 not only in the group insurance area, but in the individual area. And 24% on top of what they're talking about now is a significant chunk out of people's pocketbooks.
Thank you, Frank. Anyone else have any public comment? Lauren?
Hi. I was just hoping to generate a conversation with you guys about the inevitable hiring of the library director. about the inevitable hiring of the library director at the library. And I guess I just wanted to talk about the fact that the library director is an employee of the town. I think that their benefits and their salary are paid by the town. So I know that the library picks the director, but with the town being the one who pays the salary, I'm just wondering about a contract, if that should be between the town and employee, and if we maybe should try to get together and open up discussions about that. I also think that, I mean, I don't know if you guys already have a feeling about that, but I think that it'd be really beneficial and that if we could talk about some of the things that we could put in there, like the, like before the contract design, like a chain of command and some of the other things that have really tripped up the library and some of the problems, the costs that it's, that we've endured because of some of the problems and the chain of commands and the way things have gone out. I just think the more clear it is and the more collaboration, the safer we would be. So I'm concerned about that. I just wanted to, I wasn't sure if you have thoughts or knowledge about that, but I don't think the previous director had a contract, but I think going forward, it's probably a good idea and to have as much information as possible and collaboration would be really beneficial.
I just have a thought. So I think when it comes to the HR, like a super great resource, when it comes to HR law, is the VLCT because they have a direct person there who is a human resources specialist who deals with all of the employee, the whole employment relationship. I can try to find her information and get it to you, but even if you just were to reach out to the info@VLCT email, she's wonderful and really, really easy to talk to, and they have some great resources. So I feel like it could be beneficial to start that conversation and just inquire about, you know, what the state, especially with municipalities, you know, how they view contracts and if they have any sort of samples.
Right.
I think that would be a really good place to start just because I know HR is so specific. And I think, seeing that.
You've done so much with HR regarding the highway employees.
Yeah, I was in corporate HR for a while, so I think that, I think it's smart since that, since we as a municipality rely so heavily on them for their expertise, since the town doesn't necessarily have one designated person in that department. So that would be, I think, a really good jumping off point because they've got tons of good samples and examples. Yeah, I can, I'll write it down, and I think I have her number written down.
And the library trustees as town, as elected town representatives do have access to VLCT, right? Yeah, okay, cool.
Harley, you have a comment?
Yes. The town, from the Town General Fund, does fund the salaries of all the paid employees of the library. The library board has been solely in charge of hiring, firing, and supervising the library director. And the select board has not exerted any authority in that area. Previous library directors have had contracts. The most recent library director had an employment agreement as she was hired. And we are in the midst of hiring a library director, and we have gotten advice from council on the contract precisely to avoid some of the situations that we found ourselves in having an employee who only had an employment agreement.
Lauren?
We've had not a single conversation about contract and open meeting. And so the advice of the contract that is misleading is that statement. And I appreciate that, and I totally believe that the library trustees have the right to hire, fire, and manage the director. That's not what I'm saying. If the employee is going to be paid from the town, I believe the contract should probably, I'm going to call the rest of the team tomorrow, and I appreciate the information. But, and I'm not, this is not about stalling anything at all. This is about trying to get our ducks in a row ahead of time to prevent what happened before from happening again.
I see Julie has her number. She might know more about it.
Julie?
So I just have heard in my interactions with VLCT that they work quite specifically for select boards. So while other municipal officials have access to some of their resources, they are not going to answer questions if they do not feel like it comes from a select board person. So I think that sending library trustees there is fine and dandy as long as someone is willing to follow up on your end. And I think that it's important for you to follow up on your end because this is specifically about a contract. And I don't know how binding a contract can be if the employer is the town of Pollet and the contract is initiated entirely through the library. So I guess I'm hearing the word collaboration from Lauren, and I'm thinking that that word specifically makes a lot of sense for you guys to work together on a contract for an employee that is an employee of the town of Pollet.
Will you be able to help?
The other thing that I would like to say, and I want to start with saying, I have zero desire to say this publicly at all. I haven't weighed in on the library drama ever. The only thing that I'm going to say is that I became a board member for the very first time post Act 46, which was an incredibly contentious and divisive issue in our community. And when we became a board, we were a very well-blended board. There was people on both sides of the issue, and we were all convinced that it was going to be contentious and problematic from jump. Very early on in our history as a board, we had a very well-run retreat at which we were able to sit down and talk amongst ourselves about what we thought our role was as board members, what we thought was important for us to do for our community, for our students, for our constituents. And because we were able to have that conversation, we were able to move forward as a board in a way that was beneficial to our community, and we've gained a much more cohesive unit. And if I could recommend anything to the library board, I would recommend that you have a moderated retreat. You can all correct me if I am wrong, but I do believe that if there is not actionable items on your retreat, it does not even have to be a public board meeting, but I recommend highly that it be moderated by an outside individual that everybody agrees on. I honestly would recommend asking John Thrasher, if he's willing to do it, for a moderate sum of money because he's fair-minded and everyone in this community knows and trusts him to do that. But the drama and constant fighting that is happening has got to stop because we are never going to go forward if we do not get through this. That's all.
Thank you, Julie. Harley?
The assertion that this is a town employee is not clear to me. I will ask VLCT for their judgment about town employee and relative to a contract.
Frank?
I contacted VLCT, I'm kind of against this public meeting, thanks for clarifications and all this, I'm staying. And what I was told by the attorney for municipal area there is we are not your lawyer. By this ad and preferences, but we are not representing you, and they make it. So they are not acting as a counsel during these conversations if you can get them to talk to you. Usually, who else?
Damon, you want to share those prices with us? You want to share those prices with us?
Yeah, what do you want to know? The price of the tires completely?
He had two different prices from.
Yeah, I got a price on Michelin's, which were $21.93.65 apiece, which I thought were pretty expensive. And then I got, so I talked to them, and they said a lot of other towns get the Nokia Hakapalitas that were $18.98.53 apiece. And they said it was like six hours labor to put them on. Would, I could probably try putting them on, I don't know, I've never done it. I think that was two or three pieces for him, I would assume on it.
You wouldn't want to do that.
No, but I trapped him with the helmet. Yeah, I got, I don't know if you guys want that.
I think that you did get a good report on the Hakapalitas.
Yeah, he said most of the other towns run the Nokia's. And they all like them quite a bit. And so, yeah, that's what.
They're great on cars.
And you just need them on the front axle of that?
Well, really, all the tires need it, they're all pretty bald. You know, every tire on it is in the best of shape.
Yeah, and on those machines. Is there any that would make good spares that are on it?
I didn't, I don't remember. I know they will take those back as casing credits, some of them, but I think they got to, you know, take them back and go over them. And we all know how pizza is with casing credits. They're like, nah, they're too far. Well, I don't, I never had good luck with them with that. But I can call them on that and let you know about the credit. I mean, you could probably use one, you know, they're all pretty bald. There's not much tread on any of them, really.
So is the six hours labor, that's for two tires?
That's, well, that's for all the tires.
That would be for all six tires.
Yeah, they said it takes about an hour a tire.
About an hour a piece, okay.
To do.
Is there any other options for industrial tires around, or are they pretty much?
There's not many options. I've given you the number to Rice Tire, I don't know if you would.
I didn't call them yet, no. When I get them in, and I call different places.
Well, it's going to be a real challenge, especially to get a service truck to come out and change those big tires.
I can call that Rice, I can give them a call.
Does Warren Tire come across the state line or not?
I have never had an opportunity to do business with them.
We've done some business with them at work.
They do the industrial.
Yeah, they fix a load of tires for us.
It may be worth a call, they're good here, right?
Yeah.
I can call that other guy.
I know they have a heavy service truck, he came over. We had an issue with a tire and it popped it right off and.
That's Warren Tire?
Warren Tire, yeah.
I can give them a call.
I don't know, I'm just curious. It's, if we don't have a couple of prices, that always looks better. This may very well be, these may very well be the best tire price around, but we don't know until we have an option, so. See, but I don't even know if they come across the state line.
Yeah, I can call them tomorrow.
But if, if they don't come across the state line, I know where you could park it, New York. That would not be a big deal.
Could park it in New Hampshire and not pay tax. Shouldn't have to pay tax for the town either.
You going to drive it over?
Yep.
You have a seen number?
Yeah, I don't think I'm listed, but.
All right, so you'll do a little bit more research and we'll see what, okay.
Yeah, I called them the other day and it was just, you know, I just, I got them on the phone, so I called them. Oh, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Is there any other public comment that anyone would like to make tonight? Okay.
Don't adjourn.
I know. I'll make a motion if we go into executive session to discuss labor relation agreements with employees.
I'll second Bob's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote carried.